Because I know it's, um, it'll be interesting about the next election day is the or will be one before. Do you know Jim?
Uh, I don't think there'll be one, there could be, but I don't think there will be one before.
Okay.
We also are at, uh, seven thirty.
Oh, good. Okay. Is Chris here?
You bet.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, we want to make, get everybody in line for the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Okay. All right. With this, I will gavel us together. Called a regular public, regular, public, regular city commission meeting, easy for me, I'm so excited about the Pledge of Allegiance. Called a regular Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting of March the ninth, two thousand twenty-one to order, and we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
That, that was good. That was
Wow. That's the first one in a long time.
I'm just gonna mute myself now. I can't stop it.
Stop while you're ahead. Um, Amy, can you call the roll now that we've congratulated ourselves?
Uh, Amy, Amy is actually out silk today, so I will call the roll for you.
Well, good.
And, uh, bear with me. Now, uh, remember to state your location, your physical location, city and state where you're at, please. Uh, and we have Commissioner Perry.
Here, um, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. You threw me off. That was Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. I'm here.
I don't know what Amy's normal order is, so I'm just making it up as I go.
That's good.
Uh, Commissioner Wall.
Pleasant Ridge, Michigan, and I'm here.
All right. Commissioner Scott.
Here and Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Budnick.
Here in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
And Mayor Metzger.
Here in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. All right. Thank you, Jim. That was very nice. Well done.
Thank you.
Almost as good as Amy.
We were all nervous, yes. Um, first item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. Is there anyone with anything to bring forth? No hands raised, no nothing?
I have nothing.
Okay. We'll move on to next item is just governmental reports. So I know Kevin is here. Do we have, shall we just start with Kevin?
I think I'm the only one here, Mayor.
Okay. All right.
So, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Couple of police issues that I have to report this evening. Um, last week, we had a resident with a Ring doorbell record an event that was, um, you know, we know these things occur, it was just reiterated the fact that, um, even here in Pleasant Ridge, crime is afoot and people come here to do bad things. So their Ring doorbell had captured a white Jeep Cherokee driving up and down the streets, and these individuals in that, uh, Jeep are looking for unlocked cars, and they're checking that by the button being up, even though you can tell driving by, and they shine a flashlight or so and look and see if the button's up a little bit, indicating the car's unlocked. Passenger got out of the car, jumped into the unlocked car parked on the street. I won't give what kind of type of car it was, um, so to give away maybe the residence or anything. Um, but it was a Chrysler product. That seems to be the hot item being stolen all around here now. But, uh, jumped in the car, you could see, put up the foot on the brake, and then we assume pushed the start button, hoping that the key fob or so is inside the car, as a lot of people are doing, leaving it in there and using their pin pad to gain entry, uh, to help facilitate, I don't know, an extra five or six seconds in their mourning or for their commute. But these criminals are keen to that and are just going around looking for that and then jumping in and driving away with your car and your valuables because you're leaving the key fob in and the car door unlocked. So as I've stated many times, please check your car doors and you'll lock, fortunately in this incident, the key fob was not in the car and they did not drive away with that thing. But that vehicle was involved about an hour later in Ferndale, um, in a catalytic converter theft, which are also up all over, uh, the area. Um, I can't confirm it. I heard some info, the person didn't get back with me, but I heard there was a, a bunch of stolen cars and tires and rims, I believe in Southfield, but I'll have to confirm that, but I heard that, uh, today. But it, the crime is up. It's up in that and it, and it comes here. Um, and they're quick about it. This all occurred in about a fifteen second time period. So if you don't have a Ring doorbell, they do help us solve crimes. Uh, there's a network that you can be involved in and join and share with that. Um, so we encourage that, not just, we're not endorsing, can't endorse one product. Um, any type of video doorbell, uh, would be beneficial. And again, security lights, motion lights, things like that do, do help and scare off would be offenders. Um, Ferndale had an incident last week, um, where a whole bunch of counterfeit one hundreds were passed to use and used to buy gift cards, which then he loaded money on the gift cards and then used the gift cards to purchase items or whatever. All the hundreds looked real, but all had the same serial number. So if you're banking or doing anything, be aware, um, there's a bunch of counterfeit hundreds. The Secret Service were made aware by Ferndale, so they're actively helping them with the investigation. But, uh, be aware that the phony money is out there and being used for crime. Um, we're seeing some increase in identity theft cases here, um, where charge cards are open and stuff. A lot of people's info is out there in the dark web, they don't even realize it. Um, again, encourage checking your credit reports and monitoring your bank accounts and things like that, um, because that's leading into it's tax season. And we typically have several incidents where, um, phony tax returns are filed, so encourage you to file as early as you can if you have your documents, um, not to wait, because the longer you haven't filed, then, then criminals are able to, um, use your info that's out there and file a false tax return, and then it's really hard. You think dealing with, uh, a credit card company or something is difficult, deal with the IRS to, to tell them that you, that wasn't you that filed those taxes. Um, other than that, uh, be safe driving out there. I, uh, hundreds and hundreds of people walking the last two days with their dogs. Um, very nice to see people out, still maintaining social distance, some crossing the road, most are wearing masks, some are not, I know you're outdoors. Um, do continue to, I know as more people are getting vaccinated, most of the police here have been vaccinated with their second round. Um, so happy to say that, but still maintain, and let's, uh, try to speed up the process where we can get back to some normalcy.
Okay.
That is all I have for tonight, Mayor.
Great, thank you. I, I know there was a catalytic converter, uh, stolen on Sylvan. Were there any others in Pleasant Ridge, or is that?
That was the only one that we had too.
Okay.
So, um, we're like, but the, I heard that there was fourteen or fifteen cars stolen the other night, um, I think in Southfield, and like I said, about fifty sets of rims too, on the same night.
Wow.
So it seems to be the Chrysler products are the popular, the Durangos, the Chargers, the Challengers are the hot ticket item right now.
Okay. Good to know. Are there any questions for the chief? You're getting off easy, huh?
Thank you.
Nothing, nothing. Thank, thank you. Um, do we have any other governmental reports? Most likely not. Okay.
Um, Shawnee, Shawnee, did you want to give the pool update now?
Yeah, I was wondering if Shawnee wanted to.
Uh, you're on mute, Shawnee.
Sure, I'm happy to go ahead and talk for a few minutes about that if, if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Yeah, Shawnee and I have been, um, discussing twenty, twenty twenty-one pool season, uh, obviously it's going to be a little bit of a different one this year, so, um, let me get the, uh, PowerPoint up here and then take it away, Shawnee.
Sounds good.
But at least it'll be an open one, most likely, so.
Yes, absolutely. So before I start, I would just like to make mention that this is very tentative information. It is only March and these numbers are still kind of just a plug and play. These are not definite numbers that we've received from the state or local health department. So these are kind of just numbers that we base them on just for the sake of the presentation tonight, okay? So these are not, these are not real accurate numbers. They could potentially be, but they're based on numbers just for the, the presentation, so.
Got it.
Um, if pools, outdoor pools are able to open and operate at fifty percent, that means that we would be able to operate at sixty-six residents max per time block, and each time block would be ninety minutes. So that means we'd be able to operate with sixty-six people, that means the pool facility, and that means babies, toddlers, people in general. So, you know, a lot of people are like, oh, mom and a dad, sixty-six families. No, it's not. It's sixty-six humans are allowed on the pool deck at one time, okay? Um, so we'd use the same, um, software that we have now, it's the Sportsman software, that's what we've been using since September for the gym. It's worked really well for the people that have been coming to the Wellness Center since September, and it's worked really well, really easy for people to use. You can do it really easily from your phone. You can also put yourself in and take yourself out. It's, it's really an easy system to use, very user friendly. So again, these are numbers just kind of for the sake of the presentation today, and if they say twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, then obviously the number of residents on the pool deck would obviously change.
So this, so this doesn't count staff and everything else, they're, they're over and above, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So the tricky part is the zero depth area. So the water features are considered water park features, and at this time, water parks are not open. So like the Y, you can do some indoor swimming and stuff, but like if you were to go to Traverse City to the Great Wolf Lodge, like those pools are not open because water parks are not open at this time. So our zero depth area is considered water park, so that is not area that can be considered swimming area for, for pool patronage. Obviously, we can still use it to get in for zero depth area, but we can't use it for part of the swimming area. And if that rule still applies in the summer, we will not be able to turn the water features on. So again, that's kind of why it started there, it's asterisk, because that may be something that could change as well. So, and at this time, you know, if anybody's came to the Wellness Center, they go through the, the temperature check and the, excuse me, and the screening, which is just a few questions. Your first and last name, how are you feeling today? Have you been any COVID symptoms in the last few days? You know, the fever, sense of smell, few questions like that. It's the same questions that you're asked at any of the municipalities, county buildings, different things like that. Most anywhere that you're going to get questioned, it's the same questions. Um, have you knowingly been exposed to anybody with COVID? So we fill that out, and that's all, and that's everything that we use for contact tracing, so that way if there's ever any incidences that we need to have here, we have, um, an instant access to anybody that's been into the building, and it's, we use it in a Google form, so that way everybody that checks in, it's timestamped with a date and the time that they've been here. So we use that. Um, at this time, I know I've seen some of these things with the CDC about people that have been vaccinated and when it's going to be okay to maybe be around people, other people that are vaccinated, but at this time, everybody is, um, when you can't maintain six feet social distancing, the rule for pools, even when you're outside and can't maintain six feet of social distancing, the rule will be instituted that face covering must be worn on the pool deck when not inside the pool. Okay? So each household will be allotted one ninety-minute time block per week, and then the pool deck and pool will be cleaned, locker rooms and stuff between those time blocks. We'll, we'll build in a thirty-minute time block and during that time, thus, the lifeguarding staff and head guard staff will wipe down handles, desktops, computers, phones, and, and all of that good stuff. And then if you don't have a pool tag, so I'll go through this in one second too, but everybody in your household will be issued a pool tag. Everybody in the household has to be keyed in, so that if there's three people in your household, everybody that's there that day will have to be scanned in. Okay? It's not just, oh, hey, you know, the dad's fobbing in for the whole family. Every single person that's coming that day will have to be scanned in. And obviously, that's for, that's for, um, contact tracing as well. So in a traditional year, each household is allotted thirty-five guest passes per season. Additional passes can be purchased for an additional ten dollars. Um, in twenty nineteen, the resident attendance was eight thousand forty-nine, the guests were twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine, which is about twenty-seven percent of the, um, season average. So it's about one in four people that, that come bring a, bring a guest. So in twenty twenty-one, you're going to have to pre-register for a ninety-minute time slot. We're going to still wait to hear from the government and the Oakland County Health Department what the guidelines will be. We're hoping at least fifty, right now, they're, I believe, thirty percent for indoor pools. And like everybody knows, everything is, is starting to open up slowly but surely. Okay, so this, this is where, um, as we will get closer to the pool, um, and, and things that I will be bringing to the city commission in the next month or so, is how to proceed with guest passes for the twenty twenty-one season. Will we limit the number per household? Will we go from thirty-five to ten? Will we eliminate them altogether? Will we only allow guests during certain time blocks? Will we only allow passes on the weekend? So Greg and I, between the two of us, you know, we'll write up a couple of different scenarios, variants A, B, and C, and then what we think what will work best for everybody, for all of the residents. And then we'll bring that information to the city commission for the April meeting next month. And hopefully by then, we, we may have some more information from, from Oakland County Health Department on how we're going to proceed and how they're going to proceed. And then this is going to be a big thing, um, this is going to help, hopefully expedite things. Um, we are going to encourage all residents to come to Ridge Road to renew, either renew their passes so they can bring their already existing key tags. As you can see, these are my key tags right there, the little blue tag, it has the scan code on the back. Come bring their picture ID with their Pleasant Ridge address on the back. We'll renew all the key tags. Anybody new, bring their picture ID with the residence address on there. We'll issue them a new one. And then we'll do this during May, so that way during the long lines, you know, sixty-six people trying to get in a line for an hour and a half time block, it's going to be a lengthy process when you have to take a temperature and fill out this questionnaire. So we won't be doing any key tag renewal or issuing during pool time slots. So all of that will need to be done during non-pool operating hours. And that will just be to, you know, expedite the lines because people, it's going to be a lengthy process anyway, and so we're going to want to get those people in and out of the pool as, into the pool as fast as possible, so they can enjoy their ninety-minute swimming time. Then twenty twenty-one highlights, the new pavilion, obviously it looks beautiful, I'm sure everybody's seen it by now. We will do, um, reservations. You can see that the, the dollar amount is, is not filled in yet, so we're going to work to fill that in. So we'll do that for the ninety-minute time blocks. That will be one of the things that we will clean, um, in between, in those half-hour time blocks. The new deck furniture, it was new last year, so it's going to be beautiful, we can't wait to see it, it's blue and orange. And then lots of people have asked that, that brown grippy material that's on the pool, or I'm sorry, in the locker room floors right now. It's very safe material, but it's very difficult to keep clean. We are going to remove the ceramic tile and put down a non-slip epoxy flooring in there, so they are starting that tomorrow. So you'll see the dumpster out front, they're going to start removing the tile tomorrow, and that does take about seven business days to complete, so we're hoping by mid, mid-March that'll be done. So the biggest obstacle that we're having, some of those other things sound great and maybe be potential obstacles to you, but those are, those are easy things that Greg and I know what to do with the pool and the pool decks and, and you know, these non-slip floors, those are really easy. But the thing that we're having a hard time controlling right now is the lifeguards and the amount of people that we're having to apply. This is a variable that we've never had before, or a problem that we have not come in contact with in the past. So to be able to run the pool, we do need about twenty-five lifeguards to make it run all season, and about, between five and six head lifeguards. So the city has, is running a, a new incentive this year that the city will be reimbursing the cost of the Red, Red Cross Certification Class, which is about two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Depends where you take it, Waterford's like two hundred and forty, but it's, it's close, it's close to that. Uh, we are reexamining the hourly wage, so there could be a potential in, increase in the hourly wage. But, so if you know anybody that's interested or has been a lifeguard in the past or is looking for a job, likes the pool, likes the community, likes to be able to walk to work, likes to enhance, you know, maybe their own resume, college, college applications, anything like that, and they're looking for something, please have them come and talk to Greg or I. It's a great summer job. Not that everybody wants to be Shawnee Samper, but it is where I started a million years ago, and I had a great time. I put a picture up of myself in like nineteen ninety-three when I was sixteen years old, that my very first lifeguarding job that I had a great time at. Um, I still have friends that I talked to thirty years, almost thirty years later, and it, and it was really a good time. So I hope that some of the kids that worked for us in the past will continue to come back, new kids will continue to come out and share those positive experiences of summer with us. So that's, that is something I'm encouraging everybody, that's what I'm asking your help with tonight, is to spread that message. The other stuff is doable and easy for Greg and I to manage. The spreading the word of this message is, is what I would ask for your help with tonight.
Thanks, Shawnee, that was great. Um, are there any questions for Shawnee?
Mayor, just a quick one. Um, is the pool tag the same as the rec center tag, or is it a different tag?
There are two separate tags, there are two separate tags. So the Wellness Center tag and Dog Park tag are the same, those intermingle. I do have my, my keys with me. So this is, that's the Wellness Center tag and Dog Park tag.
Uh-huh.
And then this is the pool tag.
Ah.
So they're two different things, and there's this, you can kind of see on here, there's a scanner on the back.
Got it, thank you.
So they're two separate things, yep, you're welcome.
Shawnee, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Have you thought about, um, and this is, this could be ahead of it, since we don't know, we're waiting, but have you thought, what, what about you, what you would do if you had openings? Do you know what I mean? Like if it wasn't, since it's like a family a week, like one family slot a week?
Yeah, so we will have contingencies for that too, if, if there are. Um, so right now, we use a week ahead of time.
Okay.
For the, for the Wellness Center. So we, we may have to play with that sometimes. You, you know, it's, it's kind of up in the air, we're going to have to see how fast those time slots fill. Like, for example, my dear old ladies that are in the garden club, they never come, but we budget them in a spot because in case they would like to come, because they would have the opportunity to come. Now, we know that they're not going to because some, you know, they'll tell you they haven't came in twenty years, but we do budget for them to have the opportunity to come if they would like to, to do so.
Okay, so you're going to see what about to be in.
Yes, so we, so we, the best thing about that is the software is almost instantaneously. So, you know, for example, if the governor says, you know, on June thirtieth, you can have sixty-six people in the pool, but on July first, you can have seventy-five. We can change it right then and it's effective immediately. So it's
Good.
Very easy to make those accommodations and make those changes to be reflective for even the next hour.
Okay.
So.
Cool, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? That's great, that's great. It's good to know.
Thank you.
Let's, let's hope, yeah, I'm, I'm sure things will change monthly now, um, you know, that even next month, you may, you'll know a little bit more, but you still won't know as much as when we get closer to
Yeah.
To Memorial Day, so.
Yep, that's what I'm hoping for. Last year, we didn't know until June second, so that we were very behind the eight ball last year. So hopefully, as we progress a little bit, you know, it's seemingly every three weeks or so now
Right, right.
Know a little bit more.
Great, great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Hey, anytime, you can talk.
Thank you.
We'll put you on the agenda anytime you want.
Thank you for that.
Sure. Okay, city commission liaison reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Budnick and Ferndale Public Schools and Library.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I actually am just going to go right to library for this meeting, and, uh, once again, Mary Foreman and Stacy Stutcher were kind enough to do the work for me, so I'll, uh, I'll read their notes. So March will be a very busy month of programming at the Huntington Woods Library. It is Reading Month and Women's History Month. Reading Month activities include recurring storytimes for preschoolers and their caregivers, recurring Read Woke, reading discussion for, uh, group for grades three and up, reoccurring adult book discussion group meeting the fourth Monday of the month, Read Across America, photo submission challenge for kids, sounds fun, March Book Madness Weekly Brackets competition for kids, recurring anti-racism film reading series with Dr. Tara Hayes. The Women's History Month tribute is for all ages and celebrates the impact of women's history through trivia games and fact finding. Other great all-age events are the Monthly Family Trivia Day, as well as a Lego creation competition. Adult programming once again includes a cooking class with a Huntington Woods native, Jane Elkhorn, author of The Favorites, where she will lead lucky attendees on how to make absolutely fabulous apple crisp. The Author Speaker Series this month features Terrence O'Leary, who will discuss her six-year journey to write three Irish crossings, historical novels set during the time of the tragic Irish potato famine. And finally, when will the library reopen? Most libraries around us, with the exception of Birmingham, continue their curbside-only service. Huntington Woods Library has decided to also continue that way for now. However, a survey will be coming out soon to gauge comfort levels, raise awareness for the library's continuing online services, and address precautions going forward. So to sign up for exciting March events, go to the Huntington Woods Library webpage, HuntingtonWoodsLib.org, or give them a buzz at two four eight, five four three, ninety-seven twenty. And thanks again to Mary and Stacy.
Thank you. Excellent. Um, any questions for Chris? All right. Next, it's Commissioner Perry with Planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission DDA did not meet this month, but the next meeting will be April twenty-sixth is, um, what, when it should be on our calendar, so we'll keep you updated on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, uh, we did meet last Wednesday, and, uh, the only item to note is to, uh, alert folks that we're planning to have the, what will be a garden tour, in fact, we're calling it Outdoor Sanctuaries of Pleasant Ridge. So lots of folks have taken time over the last year to update their backyards, to, uh, just make them nice, a nice place to relax, and we're going to be featuring those on September eleventh. So mark your calendars for September eleventh to join in on the garden tour. They're actively searching for folks to participate, so if you've been working on your backyard, if you think it's just a nice place to relax, uh, please feel free to reach out to me or to City Hall, and we'll get your name on the list and fill you in on all of the information. Now, there are going to be, there's at least one other, uh, community that's hosting their home and garden tour on the same day, so you might want to block the whole day just to get around town and, and really enjoy the late summer, uh, and see what everybody's been working on in their own, uh, backyards. And that's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir.
What's the other, what's the other community, Brett?
Um, I think it's downtown, downtown Detroit.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's a great solution, sorry, Mayor.
Not a problem.
That's That's a really great solution. That's that's gonna be fun.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wall, Recreation Commission.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I've got, I've got a lot to say about this. Um, St. Patrick's Day Craft, March seventeenth, one spot left at four thirty. Going like hotcakes. Um, Zoom Adult Bingo, March eighteenth at six thirty. Pictures of the Easter Bunny, Saturday, March twenty seventh, ten AM to noon, only a few spots left for that as well. Um, youth soccer and baseball registrations underway. Soccer's deadline is Monday, so don't, don't wait for that. Um, Easter Photo Scavenger Hunt, um, the week of March twenty seventh. Um, free, but you must, but you must pre-register. Um, PR's Perfect Pet Contest ends on Friday. Um, submit photos to Greg. Registration for Gainesboro Gallery, which this is the art, this is the art show that we've been talking about that's very exciting. We already have a, um, we already have a couple, um, couple judges secured in the neighborhood. We're gonna be working on that. That's gonna be really exciting. Um, the registration begins on Monday, March fifteenth, um, for the community art show. Fun for everybody, and it's Friday, June twenty fifth. Um, I know Shawnee mentioned it, but I'm gonna mention it again. Clearly, we're doing some hiring. Um, the perks of working for PR, working in the most, I'm quoting, working for the most beautiful and cleanest pool in Oakland County. Um, job training for future employment opportunities. Working with peers, making friends, um, flexible work schedule. This, I think, is really great. Um, they're trying to be competitive. So you're, if you want to do this, the city will reimburse you for the lifeguarding class, so that does not have to come out of your own pocket. That's new. Rewarding to work with the PR community and provide a safe recreational swimming environment. Um, supportive leadership skills, um, training, and just a, just a really good experience. Lots of people have done this through the years. It's just a really feel-good. And of course, people will be so happy to be at the pool this year. Um, so, you know, get in touch. Will we see anybody? That's what I have.
That's it?
Man, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the American Red Cross will be here for blood donation on Friday, March nineteenth. So if anybody's interested in donating blood on Friday, March nineteenth, we'll be here nine to six, I believe.
Excellent, excellent.
Mayor, Mayor, could I ask a question? When, um, Amanda, when did you say, um, bingo is?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Oh, you're muted. The eighteenth? Okay.
Yeah, eighteen.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's obviously that it, all these activities are very popular. So it's great to see that they're filling up, um, so quickly. So excellent, excellent. And again, thanks to Shawnee and Greg for continually coming up with some clever, innovative ideas. Um, same thing with the library. I'm I'm impressed with all the the activities that they have going on. But, um, my hat is off also to Greg and and Shawnee for continually keeping us going, um, in spite of the pandemic. So
Thank you.
This is great.
And this is, uh, this is like a really rough form. This is what it looks like on our end, but it will be the next ridger, which will be in mailboxes, April, early April, so.
Oh, it looks great. Couple, couple pictures and you're done.
Yeah, Michelle does a way better job, but this is what it looks like. So but it has great information. So there's tennis and lots of other different things that are not, that weren't in twenty twenty that are coming back for twenty twenty one. So we're excited, yes.
It should make everybody look forward to the summer.
It's me thrilled, so.
I'm sure.
I know everybody else will be even more happy.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consideration of the consent agenda. There are only two items on the consent agenda, so unless there's any discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the twenty twenty one, uh, oops, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Your Honor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
You were just gonna move, move us right through that agenda. Second, any, any discussion? I'm sure not. Um, Jim, can you call the roll?
I can try. Uh, Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yeah, yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Good job. You'll have one, you'll have one more. You're getting good at this, Jim. You get one more time. Motion carries. So the next, next items on the agenda is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two City Commission Goals and Objectives. Um, Jim works us through this every year. So Jim, you want to just say a few words or no?
Uh, very few words. Uh, it's, it is a process we go through every year. It's very useful for helping staff, uh, prepare the budget and also, uh, prioritize our work plan for the year. The goals and objectives largely, uh, stay consistent from year to year, but there's always a few updates we make as things drop off or new things pop in. Um, this year, we have a few COVID-related items that have, they've made their way in there because that's a lot of what we've been dealing with. Um, and any resident is welcome to have a look at these. Uh, these are included in the budget document um, and and do help, uh, guide some of those budgeting decisions that we we make going forward. Be happy to answer any questions anyone has on them, um, or entertain a motion if.
Right. No, I was just gonna say, and you mentioned it, I think not that I'm giving homework to our residents, but I think it's a, it's not a bad idea. It's not a, not a long read. What is it, four pages? I think, um, but it does highlight, um, across major areas some of what we feel are the most important issues, the most important, uh, work that needs to be done by the city. And and it also points out some of our, you know, those, those things that we feel very strongly about is what, what Pleasant Ridge represents and what we feel, uh, needs to be said about Pleasant Ridge. So, um, it's, I, I think it's a, it's, it's a good idea for people just to take a look at it. Um, and, you know, always be interested in comments or any, any ideas that residents might have going forward. So is there any, anything, any commissioners have to say? Before I? Yes.
Just a quick one. If, uh, folks want to find the document, all of the pages are at the end of these, uh, of the meeting notes here, so that I can find them there.
Yeah, and luckily, there's only a nineteen, nineteen pages in this month's, uh, document, so you can find them pretty quickly. You don't have to, you don't have to work your way through a whole litany of, uh, legal ease, so.
Yes.
Okay, well, then, there's no discussion. I'm going to ask, is there a motion to adopt our commission goals and objectives?
Mayor, I move the twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two City Commission Goals and Objectives be adopted?
Is there support?
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Jim, we will call the roll, please.
Okay, um, Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Metzger.
Yes. They are adopted. Thank you so much. Um, with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
All right, uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I did go and I looked up the Open Meetings Act authorization uh, for when we can continue meeting virtually. And we can keep doing that through December thirty first of twenty twenty one. And we can do that as long as we keep our local declaration of emergency, uh, COVID emergency in place. Uh, and that gives us the ability to keep meeting virtually. So it's, it's really up to us when we want to come back live and in person this year.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask, Jim, what does that mean? Uh, what else does it entail if we keep that local emergency order in place?
Nothing. We only pass the local declaration of emergency to be able to continue to meet remotely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I think that, I think the amended state law allowed us just, without doing anything, to keep meeting virtually through March. But if we did that declaration, uh, local declaration of emergency, we could keep doing it through December.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It doesn't, it doesn't give us any, it changes nothing else in terms of powers that, you know, the city has or can do. Okay. Just for the meetings.
Do we have to re-up it or do we?
The, uh, no, I think the
We're good.
Meetings, open meetings only allows virtual meetings through December.
Okay.
So we're good, right. And if things continue, then the legislature would have to do something with that law to allow us to keep meeting virtually beyond there. So hopefully, that's not needed, but we got.
I thought I'd seen that it ran out in March, or at least so, or there was something that you said it, it went through March, but, um, we're okay, okay.
Yeah. Um, and then the only other thing I would mention is that we are, uh, having a town hall meeting to discuss our water infrastructure. Uh, basically, our water infrastructure replacement project. That's gonna be on Tuesday, April twenty at seven PM. It will be a virtual town hall meeting via Zoom. Uh, and information on how to participate in that is posted on the website. And also, a mailer will be going out to every house in the city, uh, letting everybody know that that's upcoming. This is being, um, in some ways, uh, required of the city by the state. The state passed an administrative rule requiring that the city replace all lead service lines at public cost. Uh, and the lead service line is the line that goes from the water main into your house. So that is partially owned by the city, uh, pretty much from the water main to the sidewalk is owned by the city. And then from the sidewalk into the house, uh, to the meter is owned privately by the homeowner. And when the state passed that rule that said we have to replace all of that, we now have to replace private infrastructure at public cost. So this, this, there's a pretty hefty bill. Pleasant Ridge has probably about two-thirds of our service lines are lead. One of the higher numbers, uh, in the state. So we've got, uh, a big cost there. Then we've also got old aging infrastructure. A lot of our water mains are six-inch mains from the nineteen twenties. So they're undersized. Today, the smallest water main anybody puts in anywhere is eight inches. Uh, and also, uh, iron mains tend to corrode over time, so the effective diameter of those water mains is is much less than six inches. Uh, we've, we've benefited from the fact that we're on sand here. Uh, a lot of our neighboring communities are on clay and have far, far, far more water main breaks than we do. Um, I don't think we've had a water main break in over twenty years in the city.
Wow.
So
Amazing.
It's a blessing, but now also a little bit of a curse because we've been able to avoid all of those costs that that really everybody else has been bearing all these years as they replace water mains. Um, and as cities do that, that infrastructure replacement. We haven't had to. So now we're coming up where we have to replace many, many, many lead service lines. And every time you place a red, a lead service line, you have to drill a new tap into that old main. So when you're touching a hundred-year-old iron main that's already corroded and, um, on the inside, you run the risk of of those mains starting to fail or break or causing problems with those. So not only is this a lead service line project, but it's basically an entire water system reconstruction project. Um, and that, that comes with costs, and we'll talk all about those, um, in much more detail with maps and graphs and pictures and charts on April twentieth. So.
That'll be fun.
Jim, I've got one other thing. I think people, if you could kind of bring us back to the whole water meter transponder deal, because everybody was getting letters and, and the letter said, you gotta contact us in five days and make your reservation. And I called them today and they're starting reservations for the week of April twelfth. Um, if you could just kind of refresh our minds on that.
Yes, so that's another, um, this is more regular maintenance. Water meters are good for twenty to twenty-five years. Uh, and then there's also a transponder head that sits on top of the water meter that broadcasts your usage. So that's how the city takes the water reads. Right now, we've got a trip, we have, um, have an antenna that's connected to a laptop that, uh, the DPW truck drives around. You have to set that up and it drives around and collects radio reads. Um, those have batteries in them that run out. Uh, those were last replaced about twenty years ago, fifteen, twenty years. So it's time for replacing our water meters and the transponder heads. So, uh, the HydroCorp is the company that we contracted with to do that swap-out work. Uh, they'll come in your basement, basically just unscrew your old meter, put the new one in, and we're off. So they're replacing like-for-like. So most people have a five-eighths inch meter. They're putting a five-eighths inch, inch meter back. Some people have three-quarter inch meters, one inch meters. I believe a few houses have two-inch meters. So you could have a larger meter, but HydroCorp is not upsizing any meters. Um, in their letter, they say that they'll downsize a meter, but really, I don't think anybody's going to do that. So when we put the meter, replacement meter order in, we just ordered direct replacements for what everybody has with their meter right now. Um, the five-day, uh, thing that's really just so that people don't set it aside and then it gets lost under the pile of other things that you set aside on the counter where everything, where everything lands up in your kitchen. Um, really, that's just to try to get people to make that appointment while, before you forget about it. Um, if, uh, you haven't, if you haven't signed up, HydroCorp will be sending out a couple follow-up mailers. So those will be coming weeks down the road if you haven't signed up for your appointment. So there's, there's not gonna be a penalty if you don't sign up within those five days, but really, we're just trying to get you on the books so that we can get the project done. Um, while HydroCorp is in the basement, another important piece of this is, uh, with the lead service line replacement, the state's requiring us to submit a detailed materials analysis. So our numbers for how many lead service lines we think we have are based off of old waterline installation cards uh, from when those water lines were installed or permits or any other documents that we have. Uh, when HydroCorp's in the basement, they're also gonna be taking note of what that service line material is in between the floor or the wall where that line comes in your house in the meter. Is it lead? Is it copper? So we'll have a, an extra data point, um, to help refine the picture of where our lead service lines are. It's, it's not definitive because you could have copper through the wall and then it connects to lead once you get outside. So, you know, it's certainly not definitive, but it's one more piece of information, um, that's good for us to know. And the final thing that I'll, I'll, I'll point out is, you know, we tried to use the carrot and, uh, you know, the friendly approach as much as possible, but we do have to get into your house to replace these meters, and there will be some small percentage of holdouts. Um, if it comes down to it, we can shut your water off until the meter's replaced, and we don't want to have to do that. But inevitably, in any one of these projects, we have to do that for a few houses. So, you know, you can fight us if you want, but we're still at all.
You're gonna win in the end, right?
Yeah.
Funny. Jim?
Yes.
Uh, do you have, did the letter, the, the letter come in a Pleasant Ridge, uh, envelope? I haven't seen it yet, so, uh, I'm just curious what it looks like so that neighbors are, know what to look for.
So it, it was not a Pleasant Ridge envelope like we normally send with our logo on it, but it did have two clear windows. So you see our, our city logo that Ann is holding up there. Um, those are prominently displayed on the top of the letter, and those should be showing through the clear windows on the letter. Um, it should be, should be, uh, clear that it's from the city or at least on our behalf. Right.
Got it.
And Jim, you know, I know this letter came as, um, to occupant. Doesn't our, uh, utility bill come to occupant as well?
It does. And that's why that also, we, we did an export of our database for HydroCorp. Um, just because, you know, inevitably, we always end up with, um, old names, old addresses, so.
Okay. And that's probably what, is that what the next letter will come to, the one talking about the April meeting? Okay. Um, so for folks who can, can, can you put the phone number or some contact information for these guys? Cause I think some people are saying they may have thrown it out because it was to occupant. And for some reason, the logos didn't alert them to actually look at them. So just to give them an optional way to reach out and, um, contact them.
Um, are you thinking like on the website?
Yep. Sorry, I didn't finish that sentence. Um, that would be great. Thank you. Um, and then the only other thing was, you know, it was talking about the, um, obstructed, making sure it's accessible for the people to get to the, um, to your, uh, water meter. Um, uh, um, I'm trying to think, cause I have one of the weirdest situations, and I spoke with Amy earlier in the week, and she was saying that it should be okay just because of of where it is, but just making sure all boxes and other stuff around your basement are just, you have a clear path.
So yes, absolutely, a clear path and as much space as you can create. Um, I know, you know, a lot of, a lot of people have nice basements and the water meter may be behind a wall or, you know, in an access panel. And and they'll deal with that as best they can, but if you've drywalled your water meter But if you've drywalled your water meter behind a wall with no access panel, they're gonna have to cut drywall to get to it, because you, you have to provide access to the water meter legally for us. Um, in terms of if you can move things around, basically, what you need to think about is they're gonna put a wrench on the, the nuts that are on either side to disconnect it, and they're gonna need enough room to get two hands in to grab either side of the meter and then lift it out, so just kind of spatially look at it and make sure that those, that all of that is possible, and, uh, then you should be okay in terms of access for that.
Great, I think.
And Jim, just one last question for you, going back to the virtual meeting. Uh, can the subcommittees have meetings in person without, uh, needing to ask the City Commission to do so? Cause I've heard that some might actually decide sooner to, you know, like, for example, if the Historical Commission decided to meet at the, at the, um, at the old police station, is that allowed or not allowed?
I believe that that's allowed. I think it's up to each board or commission to, to make that call for themselves.
Okay.
Um, just as long as it's, you know, noticed properly and, and everything else.
Right. Okay.
I will check on that. If there, if the true answer is different than what I just said, I'll follow up with you, but you don't have to leave it back on that.
No problem.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? Yep. Okay. Then, that was informative. Let's, um, move on. Finally, we have other business. Is there any other business? Anybody reading any good books, any book reports, any anything that we missed recreation-wise or anything else? All right.
Mayor?
Yes. I knew somebody would come through.
I had to do it.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a quick one for Jim. With the weather breaking, I was down at Gainesboro and, uh, curious on the status of opening the restroom at Gainesboro.
Um, I don't know. We have not discussed that lately. Um, I would have to get with Shawnee and, uh, we'll have to get back to you on that. It's mostly an issue, I think, of cleaning it at this point and how we handle that.
Yeah.
Everything else is on a schedule.
Right.
Yeah, I understand. I, I'd just be curious, I guess, uh, what, what guidelines you're looking at to follow for cleaning that. Um, and I guess just what, what I'm looking at is following the WHO. There, it's really more theoretical than anything with surfaces, so just curious to see what you guys end up doing, and I'd, um, yeah, I'd, I'd be curious to see if we can get that open.
Yeah, I know there's clearly a demand to get it open. Um, we recog, we recognize that, so.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Good thing. We'll get back to you.
There you go.
Jim?
Yeah.
Will I be able, will, will I be able to barbecue there before I can, uh, use the facilities there?
I hope not.
The building looks great for what's done already.
It's coming along, yeah, yeah. Yeah, when they got the steel up, all of a sudden, you could really kind of see, you know, and conceptualize what, what it was gonna be and, and what the scale of it was, and now I think some of the, uh, some of the carpentry is up for the, for the roof structure, and so you can really kind of tell what, what it's gonna be. Um, and a lot of those forthcoming details with the metalwork and the um, the masonry and the, the pavers and everything is really, it's, I'm excited this, to see it come to fruition.
You too.
That's a good one.
Excellent. Another, another thing to look forward to. All right, is there any other business? All right, then I'm gonna ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I moved to adjourn.
Suck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Good night, all.